Roll call.
Ron Granger.
Here.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Todd Dain.
Here.
Sean Morgan.
Here.
Tim Weber.
Here.
Kyle Wren.
Here.
Robert Elam.
Okay, three implications. Tim, would you give me an indication for?
Sure. Let's bow. Oh heavenly Father, gracious Lord, we thank you for this day, we thank you for the moisture that we've gotten, but most of all, we thank you for your son, Jesus, who lived a perfect life, gave his life willingly on the cross. Totally as man, but totally God, and died on the cross for us who call upon his name and was risen three days later. And Lord, I lift up our local leaders, our town staff, our police EMS, um, hospital, fire department, and all those that serve this community. I ask that you put your hand on them and continue to protect them. Give us understanding and wisdom in the decisions we make that are pleasing to you and honoring to your name. And Lord God, we lift up our county leaders, our state leaders, our federal leaders, and our world leaders. Our world is, seems in, it is in chaos, Lord, and Lord, may you uh, put your hand and intervene because nothing happens without your knowledge and without your approval. And Father God, I ask that many come to know you uh through this meeting tonight and uh, through our testimony and our witness every day uh, because of your son, Jesus. Father, just bless this time and bless this meeting in your son, Jesus Christ, precious and holy name, whose Lord is Lord and King of kings. Amen.
Lisa, would you lead us?
Let's lead us through the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number five, minutes of the meeting, discussion and action to approve the town council minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
I'm, oh, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the town council minutes of August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made by Sean, seconded by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
All upstairs, Mary Bill.
Okay, thank you.
Six petitions and public input, we didn't have, we, anybody wants to give anything? Guess not. Any changes to our agenda? Okay. No public hearing items? Or we jump right down to the town manager's update?
Um, gas department is starting some abandonment of those lines on the house fire over by the park. And they will probably start doing a demolition on those in the next week or so, so we're just waiting on the permit for that to be approved. Um, wastewater, they're doing compliance sampling, um, just doing some cleanup around the burns and everything. And obviously you can read all of their supervisor reports, which will be much more detailed. Um, water department, finally, the trepidity, I'm gonna say that wrong too, hit the waste, or water plant, so it took them two different days to really work with their chlorine and how much they had to dose it, and it was probably, I think, um, Michael said it would be like another eighty percent of what he would have to dose that with whenever that happens, so that was part of our discussion. He and I attended a meeting with um, emergency, federal people and state people, and they did a whole tour of the burn area and talked about all the implications of what, you know, will happen, and that was one of the things. And Alden was there as well, but just talking about how that will affect the water treatment plan, what are some of the financial constraints that we'll have or things that will cause problems for us, so we talked about that with them. And they are trying to encourage the governor to make that an emergency declaration, but he has to ask for that from the federal government, and then supposedly there'll be funds that can be utilized to help us mitigate those effects. So that was one of the things that we talked about at that meeting today. Um, working on some of the lights and cleaning out ditches and public works. Um, we had our pitch competition, the preliminary one about a week ago, and there was five applicants and they all did a great job, so it'll be very interesting when they do the final one, so we're excited about that. Um, Ray Lynn will be done with her training and be a full-fledged officer here in about two weeks. They are doing CPR for all of the um, town employees, they did one last Thursday, and they'll do another one this week. And um, I don't know if you ever get a chance to go down there, but the, down at the boat ramp where they're doing that terracing, it looks really good. And then we're gonna see if um, we can get some volunteers to come and try and clean up along the top of that burn. And eventually there might be a, we could maybe make a walking path from the park over to that too, but it does look pretty cool over there, I mean, they're not even close to being done, but it does look pretty neat, so it'll be a nice area, not just for the boat ramp, but for people to just get in and out of the river.
Can the public go over there and look at it, or is it like off?
Yeah, no, it's not fenced off or anything. I mean, you just have to come in from the other direction, I mean, it's not.
Camp Park over, you're gonna walk?
Yeah. Unless you go down when they have the gate open. But it does look pretty cool, so be exciting to see what it looks like when it's finished, but like I said, the supervisors have all their reports in there, so they'll probably be much more detailed than what I have. I've been working on the duplex project, I have meetings with the housing authority and also CHAFA, and then been talking with Darren. We're not, um, said, probably won't happen this year, but I will try to get that funding at least moving along so that it can't happen next year. Um, and then we're still waiting on the um, rate study for water and wastewater, just getting those numbers.
Good. That's it?
Questions? That's it.
Lisa, did you get, did you have a conversation about um, possibly getting our water rights proved out? From?
We're still waiting, I mean, we submitted that all to Waterport, we're still waiting on the determination from that. We're working with Dylan actually to um, have him pull from our area down there, and we're gonna use that towards our industrial rights. And so Michael is working with him right now, he's got a project going on that he just wanted to use that water, but he's just gonna use one of our pumps and pull out of there, and we'll use that towards proving out those industrial rights, but we submitted all of that and we're still waiting on a response.
So when you do that, do you have to? The way you prove it out is to meter it?
Um, they're not gonna actually meter it, they're gonna just use like the time it takes to pull it out and the volume that he gets in the truck, so they don't have to meter it, and then just calculate it out that way.
And so you'll have official documents by his?
Yeah, we'll document it and so show that we're utilizing those rights. Michael's gonna create some paperwork trail for that.
Okay. And then, so that's kind of a push on hmm, not charging them for it, or?
Well, I mean, they're just using our um, pump, they're not, it's not like we're like the pump, like the bulk water, we're not like doing a whole lot to pull it out. So that just helps us prove it out, this, we're just gonna do it this time around and see how that works out, it's not like we've done it on a regular basis yet, but that was the whole point of having him do that rather than building a bulk station, you know, because we really can't do that right at this moment. So we're not gonna charge him anything for it this go around and see how it goes, but if it works out into a regular basis, we'll figure something out, because it'll just be the pump and electricity.
Any other questions?
I got one, um, have you put any thought or any time into thinking about branch drop-off times changing rather than at two o'clock in the afternoon?
I have not had that discussion, I mean, it's.
I keep getting phone calls.
I mean, it can't be downward, the river thing is it's out on.
I know.
I don't know what there's, um, who's doing that right now, but I'll ask Jeff and get back with you on that.
Well, previously there, hours were like Thursday and Friday from like two to four until four in the afternoon, and most people are working at that point in time, it'd be more advantageous, and I don't know if the town wants to look at that service and charging for it maybe, I don't know, uh, just throwing some things out there to have somebody there like on Saturday mornings to uh, open it up to allow people to dump branches so it's supervised, you know?
Like maybe eight to noon or something?
Something like that, something to give them a better option that people can't get there at those times, and just because we've accommodated the school and the bonfire for so many years, and I have nine signs up there saying no dumping, and it's in Spanish, uh, I still have people dumping.
Yeah.
Thinking that, oh, yeah.
Let me address that with Jeff and I'll shoot you an email.
Okay.
See if we can do something to grab.
It is a problem, and it's just gonna continue, and then you know where it'll go, it'll go.
Well, it already does, right?
Do you think it's worth it to, do you think it's worth it to have a phone number out there for them to, to call to schedule it, I mean, calling out their?
Well, they need, yeah, you go, I think, you know, different, any options would be better than what we have right now.
I mean, from an employee point of view, it'd probably be better just to have a set time, and then they know they have to be there as opposed to running back and forth every ten minutes.
Well, I mean, more of a schedule like, you know, they call in and say we're gonna be out there, where they can get multiple people scheduled in to be out there at Thursday afternoon at four o'clock, or something like that, rather than.
I'll propose that to them.
Rather than sitting out there from two to four. Wherever I'm asking for some input.
I would just hire some uh, high school kid that's probably responsible, which you can find them.
Well, or even some college kids want some.
Or college, yeah.
Probably feel that.
You know, i- it's just something that, you know, would be, it's a good service for the community, but I don't think looking into a full-fledged uh, uh, transfer station's the right idea either, you know, if that was the case, I think uh, other people would probably jump on that as a business opportunity, but we're not big enough for that, but we're big enough to where, you know, people need places to get rid of their pallets, they need to get rid of this, that, or the other thing, and um, yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll talk to Jeff, Jim.
The transfer station takes everything except tree limbs.
Right.
Pallets, that kind of stuff.
Right, right, but people don't wanna, they don't wanna do that, they want the convenience of, oh, free bonfire handling, right?
Yeah.
That's what I hear, Tim.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Lisa?
Nope.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
All right, number ten, council reports. Anything from council? Besides Tim, uh, your group really did a great job at Timber Pass?
They did, everybody.
It was. Like always, very well attended, so. Anything else?
If anybody wants to take it over.
I don't see a lot of volunteers jumping up with it, Tim.
It's twenty years.
Number eleven, supervisors' reports, you can look and see, sure, does anybody have any questions on any of them? And I said this before, and I'll say again, it's kinda nice to have those, you can read through and actually see what's going on, because sometimes we don't hear that unless we see it on the report, so. All right. Twelve, old business, we don't have any, so we'll go to new business on thirteen, thirteen A, discussion and action to approve the August twenty twenty-five check register.
So I went through and I had some questions on a few things, and I called Mary Bill just to walk through them, and I, this might not be the place where I have it saved, but.
You wanna bring them up, or?
Yeah, I mean, some, some clarifications on a few things, I, I mean, if you have questions on it, I, anybody can ask a question, but I know I saved it somewhere. If you don't have any questions.
He asked a lot of questions.
Sorry.
Well, he's looking up, does anybody have anything else that they looked at or saw or would like to bring up?
What's the town of Newcastle post reimbursement?
So we're the fiscal agent for posts now, so they will send money to Mary Bill, and they do applications for training and everything, and we'll pay it out, but we don't pay it out till we get the money, so it's a watch, it's kinda like us being the fiscal agent for the Diamond Star Welcome Center.
I found it, so.
The ground engineering for the youth, for instance, retaining walls, that's that big one on the north side of sixty-four there?
That's the good one that they um, kinda.
I thought we did that once before, didn't we?
They never did the engineering, they did the lines. I mean, but the engineering is to say how we could put like the blocks in place to.
Well, I gotcha.
I think they did that uh, to apply for that C dot grant, they needed more information, but we didn't get the C dot grant, but it's in place now, so we'll know.
What you need, gotcha, because I, for some reason, I thought we'd already done the engineering on that.
They did the planning, engineering, but not the actual structural part.
So the, the questions I had was on the first bank statement. There was a, first one is for two hundred and eleven dollars. What that was for, and it's for a gun cabinet? That has got taken to the school for uh, protection of guns, it's sixteen gun cabinet? Clinton, is that you? Yeah?
Yes, sir, that is, so uh, it'll go in my office, once the school builds, once the school find my office, you have three meetings to try to find one, um, it will be installed in the wall, and then my patrol rifle will go in there, that way I, if there's an emergency in the school, I don't have to run out to my car, get my rifle, and make entry back into the school, I can just grab my rifle and go straight from my office to the emergency. The rifle provides more accuracy in a closed room than my hand pistol does if I need to engage somebody.
Okay.
Um, six, that is the cheapest and smallest safe we could find that still would meet the security standards that you need to meet that in the school. It is a key entry, I'm the only one with a key outside of um, Chief Hamlin and Lieutenant Carter. Um, and my office will be completely secure as well, um, with me, Jose, and Mr. Scott being the only one who can access my office.
Um, so the other one that I asked about was the third one down, which is six hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents, and that was for um, expenses when Rich was out of town at the FBI conference?
Yes, it was his hometown.
Um, the thirteen dollars and eight cents going on down was a lunch paid for by an employee that went out of town for lunch for the day. Um, the other one that I asked about was a thirty-one sixty-nine, which is a lunch. Um, for an employee that's going out during work times, and they got lunch, the eleven forty-seven forty-one was for the bike rally. Do we get any grants from that? Do you know, Kilduff?
Uh, last year, uh, we went to Big D's and they donated with Big D's, Silver Sage.
Well, Chevron Pipeline gave twenty-five hundred.
They donate, they, we get all that from donations, I believe. I just remember last year I went to Big D's and got a check from Dylan, and I went to Silver Sage and got a check from the guy who owns Silver Sage. Um, I don't know how the funding for this year worked, I did not. Wasn't hard to ask.
The only thing that we got for this year was from Chevron Pipeline.
Yeah, Chevron uh, gave twenty-five hundred dollars.
And so we also talked about this CF Investors partnership, and so um, and Mary Bill, we talked about it, so will you explain it a hell of a lot better than I can?
So we always uh, write a check to CF Investors for the townhomes, that's their portion of it for uh, but all those negatives are expenses we eh, we have used to, because we had a townhome become vacant, we had to go in there and paint and repair some things, so it actually comes off of what we pay to CF Investors. If it's a big, big purchase, um, Darren has to approve it, and it still comes off of that also. So the original amount, and you'll see it, it's the third one down, it says housing rents, it's four thousand seven hundred ninety, but by the time you take all the expenses off that we bought things to clean up or repair in that townhome, the final check amount was four thousand three ninety-one thirty-seven. And that will happen with every townhome that we will renovate or have something going on with.
Synergy owns five of them, the town owns one, and we have that maintenance agreement, so if it's anything over and above just regular maintenance, it, he pays for it.
Okay. Um, you know, and then we got a po, quite a few vet bills, you know, an amount of eleven hundred and ninety-two dollars, and Mary Bill said that the charges will be reimbursed by, for our animals?
Mm-hmm, at quarter, yes. We submit those to Kelly, and then she cuts us a check for the total amount for the quarter, so it will be um, we already did that once, and so, because they received a grant for that purpose, so they'll reimburse us for that.
And the six hundred and twenty dollars one wasn't for one animal, that was servicing twelve individual animals?
Isn't that where they gave them the shots?
Yes.
Because I know we, we took the pup that we had out there.
It was all the puppies that they had.
Yeah, and there was a bunch of them out there, because we actually had to schedule a time to be there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there was twelve of them.
Yeah.
So just some things that red flagged me and Mary Bill was able to answer, thought I'd share them with you. And I, I uh, went through almost every one of those when I signed, at least on the main card one. Had the same answers. Same questions. I'll make a motion to approve the August twenty twenty-five check register. I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Andy, seconded by Sean. Any discussion? Other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion and action to approve a contribution to Giant Step Preschool for the fund for public giving in the amount of three thousand. Are you gonna talk to us today?
Yes, absolutely. Um, just to introduce myself, uh, I am Kirsty Kilduff, I am the director of Giant Step. Giant Step Preschool has been a cornerstone in the community for over forty-five years, providing safe, affordable, and high-quality childcare and preschool services. We are currently a Colorado Shines Level Three rated facility, this rating reflects our commitment to quality and dedication to giving every child a strong start. With that, you are a Level One when you get a license through the state, so like the public preschool here is Level One, it can go as high as a Level Five. Um, we have people come in and observe us, and we have a whole book that we have to go through, and this is just saying that we go above and beyond the basics to get there. We are the only licensed facility in Rangeley, there is only one in-home license center. Our mission is to support working families while nurturing child development and contribute to a thriving local economy, so the reason I'm here, a little backstory with that, is the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five year, we had over fifty kids enrolled, um, providing childcare, allowing parents to either work or attend school, sometimes both. As we started our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six year, we have about half of that. Right now Giant Step supports the local workforce, we have several kids with at least one parent who works for the hospital, at least one parent who works for the school, some of our other parents work for the town, GOs, Natural Soda, the mine, Bank of San Juan's, Maverick, Big D's, Utah Gas, Prime, CNCC, Chevron, Scout, Rio Blanco County, and a few are even small business owners here in town. Uh, like many childcare centers, we've been deeply impacted by rising costs and payroll, food, and supplies. Giant Step's operational costs are continually increasing, and living expenses for our families are also increasing. This leads to tighter budgets, less funding available for childcare, and results in reduced and inconsistent enrollment. The lack of sustainable funding has made it difficult to maintain full operations while still keeping tuition affordable to local families. We've had increased staffing issues, especially with maintaining qualified teachers and support staff within budget and following state guidelines for ratios and safety. Due to external budget constraints, we've lost a grant that historically covered our property taxes and insurance costs for the center. Insurance in particular has been a huge hit to our budget, the cost doubled from last year despite a lack of claims, we didn't have any. Additionally, few providers offer coverage that's necessary to a childcare center, we don't have a lot of options to switch to. Things that we've done to reduce costs are reducing our operating hours to minimize payroll while still supporting families during peak work hours. I am in consistent communication with families to meet their needs and adjusting the center's hours accordingly. The last three weeks, I have been there at seven o'clock to meet families, I've waited till nine o'clock to go, and I truly, my schedule is all over the place to best accommodate the families, we've reduced our staffing levels to the lowest possible while still ensuring we meet regulatory requirements and maintain quality and safety. We have implemented a cancellation policy with a no-show fee to mitigate the impacts of a student not attending last minute, this allows for us to reduce food waste and adjusting staff appropriately. We have reviewed all expenses and replaced those with lower costs where possible, this includes phone, email, and internet. The only purchases that are made are ones that are essential or funded by specific great dollars that cannot be real, re-allocated to other things, we do not purchase anything that is non-essential for running the business. Um, ways we can, we've increased funding is we maintain eligibility for C cap, which is the state um, assistance, but that is income-based, so there's only so much I can do with that for families, they have to apply through DHS and meet those requirements. Our board also implemented a twenty percent increase on current tuition rates, that went into effect in August. Um, with that, our full-day rate went up by eighteen dollars a day, um, that was a huge hit to our families as well. Our center has actively pursued grants and donations. Giant Step has consistently proven its, itself as a worthy organization and been a regular recipient of a grant from the Temple Honusque Foundation. I did just apply for that one, we will not know until about November, and if that's granted, we get it in January. We host several fundraising events, especially those that benefit the community, as well as Giant Steps, such as partnering with the high school student council to do date nights, participating in local events, and doing our Butter Braid fundraiser. Both staff and Giant Step families have donated their time, money, and materials for these fundraisers, and are all invested in helping Giant Step succeed. Despite these funding efforts, we continue to face a significant shortfall due to increased operating costs and financial limitations of our families. This is why general operating support through any grant money or donations is essential to keeping our center running and accessible to the community. The loss of Giant Step would be devastating to families, employers, and the overall workforce. Closing the center would increase the burden on local employers who depend on working parents, reduce school readiness and social develop, developmental opportunities for dozens of kids, increase stress on extended families or unlicensed caregivers, and send a discouraging signal to young families considering relocating to Rangeley. We are seeking financial assistance to bridge funding gaps while we pursue long-term solutions. This will help cover operating costs such as payroll, utilities, and food, and stabilize so we can continue to provide essential services to the community.
Questions? Let me, I can, do you have an idea of how you're gonna sustain, uh, I'm sorry, you say that we say three thousand and you've got others? How are you gonna sustain going forward without doing that again?
The price increase just went into effect in August, and it was halfway through the month. So the way our billing works is our kids will attend all of August, September first I send out the bills. And so this past week I sent out the bills, and we noticed a pretty significant increase, um, I am texting, calling, emailing every chance I get, people that I know have young kids that aren't in school yet, I have been in contacts with some people at CNCC to advertise that we have openings. We are seeing an increase in enrollment, which is great, um, I have had eight new applications in the last week for new kids starting, they're just not on our schedule yet. So I think the biggest thing is reducing the cost that started pretty heavy at the beginning of the summer. I've been running bare bones staff, um, the grocery shopping we do, it's every coupon I can. The grocery shopping we do, it's every coupon I can find, I mean, we're just really trying to cut down now. And make sure that our tuition is covering all of our bills, um, we did apply through. The county, we sent out the application yesterday to be tax exempt for our property taxes. And then I have a meeting, we, um, our early childhood education. Council is through Connections for Kids in Craig and she's kind of my go-to with the state, I have a meeting set up with her at the beginning of October. And she is bringing in different companies for insurance, so hopefully we can shop around there and find. That to go down to, so our biggest one right now is we're just trying to cut costs as much as we can. And I think one thing that's gonna help us out is there were several years primarily during COVID, they did not do price, um, tuition increases. Because we got a lot of money from the state and we had different things being open and we had that in the bank for a while. And I think we got a little too comfortable and this was before my time, but now I'm trying to play catch up with that. So they didn't do tuition increases for four years, it might have even been a little bit longer than that. And I think going forward, we just have to increase a little bit each year.
So have you, have you done a cost analysis of any kind to find out, okay, to meet the cost that we have? We need to have twenty-eight students or twenty-nine students, have you done anything like that?
No, that gets a little tricky because in our building, we can only have fifteen kids in the building at one time.
Right.
But I see like twenty-two kids a day, so we have some that only come a half day in the morning and then go to public school, we have some that come. Back from public school, we have some that just ride the bus after school, we have some that are there all day, we have kids that are only there Monday, Wednesday, so it would be really hard for us right now. To only limit ourselves to, cause if we had fifteen all-day kids, we would be set, but it's really hard to do that. So we have adjusted our prices with that as well, we noticed last year that we were getting about eight kids off of the bus at four o'clock. And we were only charging like twelve dollars for them to be there, so we increased that significantly. And it is a great need for parents and so far I haven't had any complaints this year because that need just outweighs. Them not having the option and so that's been a good increase too, I think really. Um, diving deep into our budget has really helped us with that and I have a board that. We nitpicked it at our last board meeting and we cut that down, so the. Financial paperwork that you guys have is a couple months old, that's when I had originally come in to talk with Alan. But our budget is looking a lot better for this upcoming year.
Anything else from anybody?
What's? So you're looking for three thousand dollars? I guess cash donation or are you looking for?
Originally when I.
Utilities or?
Came in, we had asked if we could have financial help for our utilities and, um. After the first conversation with Alan, I was told that was not an option, I understand things have changed since then, so I'm not sure.
That's not really, it's better for us to do it as a donation as opposed to taking it out of the actual enterprise funds.
As opposed to credit going forward?
Pardon?
Could you do a credit going forward?
You're taking away from the enterprise funds, they have to run as a business, that's why you just go ahead and take it as a donation.
So the, so you think that, go ahead Sean.
Well, that's, that's just all that we have left in our fund for.
This year.
Yeah, for the rest of this year, so any kids that come to us or anything like that, we won't have anything. For them if we do this whole payment, right?
It would finish out that one, to be honest with you, most of the kids have activities through the rec center. So I, I don't foresee another.
F B L A's or anything like that for us here.
We really try to encourage them to do things where they will come in and like do things to earn money as opposed to just getting donations.
Have you got any donations from any other? I guess, I guess that's a twofold, so any other government entities in town or private entities?
Um, we did receive two donations this past month, Joyce Key. Is one that donates to us every year and it's usually at the end of the year for tax purposes, but she was able to give us that earlier. And then at the hospital, Kyle might be able to explain this a little bit better, the hospital made a donation, but it was from the fund for the board members. It was out of their fund.
So it wasn't, um, coming from taxpayer dollars, it was out of the board's funds that they have.
And I do plan to go to the school district as well, I just have not had success getting on their agendas yet.
I have a question.
Go ahead Doug.
Have you, uh, done any community attempts at community fundraising as in? Uh, just random, not saying you have to do this, but like, uh, bake sales or raffles or any of that, have you tried any of that at all yet?
Yes, so this year, just in the last couple of months, I did the roar. We did the walking tacos there and with that, all completely donated by our current families that are there. So we did the walking tacos. Sold soda Friday and Saturday, that was completely donated, we did all of the legwork behind that, all of that, my time was donated that weekend. Over the rally, we had a bake sale at Giant Step, this weekend I'm doing a bake sale at the Tractor Supply Farmers Market. Um, butter braids start next week. I know I'm missing more. We've done the date nights with the high school, so we partner up and have the student council come down and volunteer their time. And we open up on Friday or Saturday nights and you can drop your kiddo off for, I think we did twenty-five dollars for three hours and parents can go. Do what they wanna do, dinner, whatever, grocery shopping, sit at home by themselves, um. I know there's more that we've done. I'm blinking on them, I've definitely done, in years past, it's only been butter braids. So this is a new territory for me as well, trying to find. Things that the community will appreciate and attend while not trying to burn everybody out going door to door every single week. And things like we desperately need to be redoing a storage in our, um, room for all of our supplies. And I put it on Facebook this week and we've had. Uh, everybody has donated the totes, I have fifty totes that were donated that didn't have to come out of our budget. But that's a safety issue, when licensing comes in in two months and tells me that I have to get rid of all the old ones. They can potentially make us close until I have all the cracked. Items replaced, so it's a really hard balance, but all of those totes were donated, so that's a financial burden off of our shoulders as well. While we'll still meet all of those safety requirements.
Thank you, what is, what is your current tuition cost?
So full day is seventy-eight dollars per day and that's anything over five hours. From two hours to five hours is forty-eight dollars, anything two hours or under is thirty dollars and we go day to day. And then we have sick fees implemented. Um, our cancellation policy is if I don't have three days notice, you get charged for the days that you were on the schedule for, because I do have to plan out a menu and staff weeks in advance. Um, sick fees, that one's a hard one to balance, the state says we can't have kids that have a fever, cough, anything like that. But we can't miss out on that money, so we do half of whatever your child was scheduled for, we bill you for half of that time. So I just had to do it today and for tomorrow, there's a kiddo that's homesick, mom and dad are not at work, but I am charging them twenty-five bucks each day. And most of the time, like right now, I go in and I'm there for two hours by myself. While kids are coming in, we hit a peak time where I have to be able to cook lunch. Um, and have nine kids there, so I have somebody else come in from ten, nine-thirty to one. Then we have nap, but we have two groups, so somebody has to stay in the big room, I have to pay somebody else to be there and then I leave. I go coach, but then we have one other per, we have one person there at closing, so we're really running, ideally we need two people there at all times. But I just make do right now.
How many employees do you have?
We have four employees, I am the only one that's considered full-time. Um, and I'm also the only one that gets paid more than the minimum wage, everybody else is at minimum wage and. Maybe twelve hours a week for each of them. Yeah, we're supposed to be, N A C E is the national accreditation, we try to stick with their ratio, which is seven kids to one. But per the state of Colorado, we can have ten kids to one. Um, with the N A C E standard and the one to seven ratio, our Colorado Shines rating depends on that. So I try to stick with the seven to one as much as I can, but sometimes it just doesn't happen, um. With that, with our Colorado Shines, also that leads to more funding through the state from us, so C cap, going back to that. The higher level you are with the Colorado Shines, the more funding you get from the state, so that's a really important. Thing, but we have to pay for them to come out and evaluate us and we have to pay for all the paperwork. And it's about eighty hours each year that I have to put in for paperwork and trainings and it's, it's a lot.
I think we, I think what you do is like amazing, you know, because there's a lot of. You know, I think it's just like school teachers, cause basically that's what you guys are besides, you know, maybe for that younger age, so I think it's amazing. Um, that you're able to be there because I couldn't do it, so I thank you for it.
Thank you.
Um, but I think one of the things that, and maybe this is a holdup that some of us are thinking about is. You know, you're a business in itself and it's. But it's delicate also, just like you said in your, in your statement earlier about, you know, we've gotta have childcare for the working families around. Around the town and, and if that's a kicker, then maybe it's, you know, it takes them thirty dol, thirty dollars. Or sixty dollars to drive from Vernal every day, whatever it may be. Um, but I think it gets back into that deal where, you know, you're a business. And, um, similar to if, say if Napa came to us and they said, you know, we're, we're kind of in. A point where we're in shortfall, you know, and then asking for donation out of taxpayer dollar. To fund his business, so I think, you know, it's kind of a, it's kind of a weird deal because you guys are your own business, right? Napa's their own business, if something was to happen and they asked for a dollar back for their stuff and it's. So I think it's kind of hard for me, and I don't know that it is everybody else about, um. You know, give them taxpayer dollars for that, but it still gets back me into that position where, you know, I wanna have that. Service for the community also.
Sure.
Um, but you kinda see where I'm going with it, it's, it's a tough deal, so. I guess at this point right now, are you guys not able to pay your bills? Because you did talk about, you know, things are looking up for you right now. I mean, so is this three thousand dollars that you need right now to help pay for bills that you have right now that you can't pay?
No, I mean, we're caught up on our bills, we try our hardest to not fall behind on that, um. It's just, the hardest part, which is something we're also trying to look at, is we provide childcare, so like for August. We have already provided childcare for the whole month of August, we've already bought the groceries, done the food, paid payroll. Now we're just kind of hoping parents are paying their tuition. To do that, so we're a month behind, we are trying to figure out how to switch that to a prepayment, but that's potentially sticking parents with two months of bills at one time. And I know this past month, I mean, I sent a bill out that was nineteen hundred dollars and their kids weren't even with me every day. And so it's just one of those things that, and we have policies and procedures in place. For people that don't pay, their kids are taken off the schedule and it's a whole thing, but I have bills from May. That I've had to kick their kids off the schedule and I have money out, so we're working through that too, but with these other donations, I mean, we're. Comfortable right now, it's not a panic like it was when I had originally came. I wasn't even sure how we were gonna make payroll at the beginning of July, to be completely honest. Um, so with these other two donations, that helped tremendously, but it's still one of those things that, I mean, we're having to talk. Weekly in making sure that we're looking at different grant opportunities and things like that, just to get. I feel like get our feet back under ourselves. And it's hard, cause I don't think if we would have known that, A, the grant that has, I mean, it's paid our payroll ta, or our, um, property taxes. And insurance for the last thirteen years. And it's, it was through the county commissioners, in the last two years, they've said they've had to tighten their strings and we didn't make the cut.
How much money is that?
That together, let me just look, I think was thirteen thousand dollars, but let me just double check. I don't, I do have the applications, I could email you that. So property taxes. Were twenty-three hundred and the insurance costs were eighty-six for this year. And like I said, the, the insurance doubled this year and it doubled last year too, when we've had no claims, we've had no problems. Anything like that, and I know we're not the only ones that have struggled with that, the public school has too at something with. Dealing with kids and all of the extra, um, liabilities we have to have with that. And we're trying to find solutions for that, but I think the. Agency that does our shopping for us for insurance, they came back with two quotes and it was like a seventy-dollar difference was all it was, it's not a lot. So I'm hoping my connection in Craig can help me with that, but that meeting's still a month out as well.
I guess for my. My heart is for you because you, you know, you're taking care of the future. Um, but my mind is also saying, um, if you have enough money at this point in the game. To get you by for a little bit, that, um, looking at a donation or grant would be. From a taxpayer dollar point of view would be something, if you get into the point where you need it. Then ask them for it at that point.
Okay.
But that's me, there's seven other people, six other people in here right now to speak for themselves, but.
And like I said, when I did originally come in, it was around the fourth of July.
And I apologize, we, we truly apologize because that whole deal.
Sure.
Was unacceptable, the way that that was handled before was completely unacceptable. And I think not only me, but the rest of the council apologized for the.
I appreciate that.
You went through and not getting an answer until four months later, cause that's unacceptable.
I appreciate that, so yes, things have changed for us, but know that it's been since then, we've, I mean, I've been in and out of businesses and talking with people. Every spare minute I get, I basically take Sunday afternoons off to rot on the couch for a little bit and. This is just something, even though I've only been at Giant Step for three years, um. It's devastating to think that we were about to have to close our doors in July. So, um, and I definitely.
Apologize for that, because that is unacceptable.
And we're, we're working, we're trying to get there and this, like I said, this tuition increase, um, we did see a hit, we had some families that said we can't afford it. Which is heartbreaking, cause they don't qualify for the state help due to income and there's nothing I can do about that one. Um. But then to lose out, I mean, there was one kid that was there every day all summer and August first rolled around. And she said, I'm really sorry, we can't do it anymore, that was a huge hit to lose that family, so we are trying to find that balance of. Making the money as a business and thinking of it as a business, but trying not to lose all of our families too, cause then it goes down. The rabbit hole of people calling aunts, uncles, neighbors, all of that and that's pulls at my heartstrings because there's so many studies that show that that's where the abuse starts. And so we wanna keep, of course, the kids in the community as safe as we can.
Well, therein lies the nature of your whole problems, I, you know, uh, Mr. Schaefer said, it echoes a lot what we all think.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but the downer for you is, is, is just that two-word acronym, nonprofit. And when you come for money from a taxing entity, the ballgame is different. I'm not sure from the county side for it, I can't speak on behalf, you know, but I can speak on behalf. As a whole for governmental entities, we're all struggling.
Sure.
And we have nowhere to go as a governmental entity or government entities if the money runs out. That being said, going back to the nonprofits, that, you know, it's no different than a Boys and Girls Club. Only they're a nationwide organization, to where you're just central, you're a small standalone nonprofit, that's how it was designed. The building is owned by the town or who?
With the LLC, yeah, they, the LLC owns that.
Few years, okay, so you know, i- i- it is a struggle and all our heartstrings get pulled on that and. You know, I think like Andy had said, that, you know, if you guys are good now, let's just see how this plays out. Problem is, is that you're always on that stressor and on that, on that, that element of that thing that keeps you on your toes. That you gotta, 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 that's what you have, that you gotta, cause if you don't gotta, it doesn't happen.
Right.
And, and, and that's the struggle, you know, you're, you're, you're asking a taxing entity for support. And we're like, yeah, we get it, we wanna do it, but in the same respect, what do we do different? And with the county too, I'm not sure where they're pulling, I'd like to find out where they're pulling that grant money from for that. Um, they don't seem to have too much communication with us and us back to them, that's pretty non-existent with our county. And we have a county commissioner, I think, don't we, at on this end, but. Um, it'd be nice if they would reach out and I know we have to reach out as well. We need to get our act together as a town, uh, and get a town manager and hear who will lead the way for us and. Uh, and help us with communicating and working with county and community problems that I think can be solved. It just gotta work together, but put things aside, so. But I appreciate you more than you know and, and I know it's a struggle because we're nonprofit. Any other discussion or questions?
I think my motion right now would be to uh, to table this, keep it on the agenda. For the second Tuesday of the month, for the next couple of months, see where we get.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so my motion is, I make a motion that we um table the contribution to Giant. Giant Step Free School, um, from Fund of Public Giving in the amount of three thousand dollars. That we table it um monthly uh through the end of the year.
Second that. Okay, there was a motion made by Andy, seconded by Kyle. Do we have any discussion?
First one, as a little caveat, could, Lisa, would you be willing to reach out to the county and see where they're pulling those funds from? Why they pull them, uh, and is there any possibility of CCI TF money? Cause that CCI TF money is countywide and it's supposed to not.
Told under very emergency purposes, maybe next year.
Well, I, I.
I asked about CCI TF funds.
Well, thank you for doing that, but that's not just for the county, it's for everyone.
No, I.
They, that wasn't meant, they're the guardian of it.
I did ask for like, um, what they have earned, cause it always runs on interest, so I'm waiting to get some numbers on.
I know a year or so ago, they gave five thousand dollars to the tank and five thousand dollars to the Meeker Mustang makeover. And there were districts that needed money and those are not taxing entities. That money is for taxing entities, including the county. And I understand that money was given out of the county's discretionary fund, but that still counts as taxpayer money.
But I'll make sure enough to use, I get more information.
I think Diane Sizemore is also looking into it, she's on a mission.
Yes, Diane was on the understanding when she was on Giant Steps Board and this originally came through. That the exemption to property taxes was for the lifetime of Giant Step and she said, I know there's paperwork. She is on a mission and is getting me names and paperwork, so we are working on that too.
And don't get me wrong, you know, I know the county's under, under budget constraints as well, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat them up for that. I'm just saying, hey, hey, you know, we've got a lot of empty buildings uh that were built. That nothing's happening with them. Sorry to say the county commissioner meeting, I can't go along.
So we do have a motion and a second out there, is there any other? No, I'm just complaining. Anybody else have anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the motion that Andy made, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries, so I can tell you this, i- if anything comes up, don't hesitate to make sure that they know, so we'll know what's going on.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Christie, thank you.
Thank you, and by the way, I was gonna tell you, you've been there for three years, that's two years and nine months longer than I could have made it. Thirteen C, discussion action to appoint Jeremy Laurie, Elizabeth Wiley, Diane Sizemore and Emma Baker. To the Rangeli Historical Pres- Preservation Board respectively.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Kyle, seconded by Sean, any discussion?
Can I amend that to say Beth Wiley? JD added that letter, but it's not on the motion.
That Beth, instead of, it says Elizabeth.
Yeah, that's who it is.
I was making sure we had the right number of people.
Any discussion?
How often will this board meet? How often will this historical board meet?
The same probably amount of times as RDC, but possibly more, depending on if they're trying to pursue a um designation.
And I can't remember, do they have a budget or no?
Um, they just will operate under the RDC, but they'll be getting grants.
That, that's, I was wondering where they were operating under, okay, I couldn't remember, so, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thirteen D, discussion action to appoint Jeanie Caldwell and Keely Ellis to the Rangeli Historical Preservation Board in an advisory role. So moved.
What is an advisory role to that?
Just so that they can follow the guidelines of History Colorado and advise the board on those things. But they also need at least five members, they'll also be voting members, but they'll be more in charge of making sure they're following all the guidelines. To do it appropriately.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Tim, seconded by Sean, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion action to approve a grant application to NDME Colorado Natural Disaster Mitigation Enterprise. In the amount of twenty thousand five hundred and eighty dollars for water trib- tribidometer, is that right? Say it.
Tribidometer?
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Uh, and controls, purchase and installation.
And so that would help Michael and them uh actually treat the water more efficiently too, because they would know what they're getting and.
So moved to appoint to approve the grant application to NDME.
Second.
Motion made by Tim, seconded by Kyle, any discussion?
So is this. That's through that Colorado disaster mitigation from the Lee fires, from the Lee and the Oak Fire?
That is just a grant that was due on that day that we could apply through. The meeting today is to open up other funds for other purposes. This one just is a grant that's out there for emergency management that was due on like the twenty ninth, I think.
And I believe Mike spoke to us about that as well.
And so it was just an opportunity that we could get something and like I said, I don't know if it'll be successful, but. It was just a grant that was already out there, so they.
And I think we keep pounding the government for emergency funding on that deal, even though we don't think we need any now.
Oh, we're, we.
No, I know you are, Lisa, I'm just saying.
Things that we know we will have.
We need a backhoe, we need a lot of things. Digging trenches. Yeah, I think this tribidometer, too bad we didn't do this two months ago, cause it'd be real interesting to see what it's reading right now.
Okay, we do have a motion, a second out there. Call for a vote, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Discussion action to appoint Lisa Peering to the RDA Rangeli Development Association and RDC Rangeli Development Corporation.
So moved.
Been there, done that.
We're down two people, so we still need another one, so um.
I've, I would do it if they could meet at a different time.
This is for when I'm no longer part of the town too, so.
So I do have a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion made by Tim, seconded by Sean, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Information item rare pitch competition September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five, and that's when they have to actually present in front of people. Besides just the judges, right?
And what is the um room that they're doing it in, they're doing it in that amphitheater type room?
Oh, in um, um, uh, Rector, it's, and, and I don't remember, I teach in that classroom, but I don't know what the number is, so it's like. One oh one B and it should be one oh one A, I don't know, it's when you, when you first walk in, it's on the left-hand side.
They have made some really good presentations, it'll be fun to see, I, I wish they all could have some.
Is that open to the public?
Yes, it is, absolutely is.
What time is it at?
I.
I wanna say it's gonna be five thirty or six, but let me check with Janine, cause she isn't, she didn't have it on here, she'll, she'll get, she'll know.
Could you throw that out in an email, if possible, I'd like to come up with a lot of that also.
And I, I gotta tell you, so I know all five because I always got the opportunity to teach them and they all five have the completely different ideas. But good ideas and I, I'm, I'm looking forward to see how they do in front of everybody, so. Anyway, board vacancies, we talked about the RDA, so you said there's two, who else stepped up?
Well, you're dragging that.
I, I, I know I was.
And Emma Baker was off a.
Oh, okay, I, I forgot about that, okay. Scheduled announcements, you can go through those and look at those. And anything else from the board?
I got a quick question regarding water.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we, Lisa, have you heard if we have an estimation or what if, if that weird smell and taste is gonna clear up?
Well, probably not soon, um, we're, the water is safe to drink, but um, there's not a lot we can do about. The smell, I mean, I, I guess I drank out of Cistern too long when I was growing up, but I don't think it tastes horrific, I mean. The water is safe to drink, but as long as we have the turbidity, it's, that's what it is. I mean, and it can last, I mean, the thing they said, it can be the first three years, it can be pretty steady like that. And then three to seven years, it can start dissipating, just because of all the runoff of the ash and everything else that goes along with it. So we're, it's safe to drink, it's just maybe not as palatable as you'd like it, but.
Right, okay, thank you.
And Michael did put something out on Facebook about that today, so.
Anything else?